... citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment, please step forward to the podium on our left, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.[10.05][10.05](laughter) If you can. Otherwise...
Thank you Chair Nugent and Planning Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. Since the last meeting, I think we've made some good progress on some of the issues, and I want to express my appreciation to staff and the city attorney for working -- we met last week and we worked through some of the issues, and we do appreciate that engagement. We believe we're okay with it. We haven't seen the next draft of the ordinance to see how some of those changes are worded, so, you know, we'd like to see that as well. But generally, I think we're headed in the right direction on some of those. We appreciate that. That includes some language that addresses our concern about the stated preference for small cells and smaller technology, and also our concern about spot zoning. There were some changes discussed that could be made, and we thought that the -- we thought that, again, with those changes, that we would be okay with that. So, we appreciate that. And those -- most of those issues are addressed in staff's April 19 memo. There were two memos, I believe, that you received for this particular meeting. I just wanted to take a moment and talk about the memo that came out earlier today. And I thought I'd just -- just for organization purposes, I thought I would just go through -- go through them in order, so to make it easier to follow. Now, before I do that, if it's all right, I'd like to pass out just a small handout, if that's all right.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, I'll talk about this particular attachment in just a minute. We have not had a chance to fully review the memo that was produced for today, but we have a couple of initial thoughts. We thought it might be helpful to -- especially if you're going to be talking about them in depth tonight. The first issue I'd like to look at is the reconstruction of non-conforming facilities. That's the first item. And generally speaking, this was a concern that I raised at the last planning commission meeting about there are a number of existing facilities in the city that after the new ordinance, as it's drafted, as it's envisioned today, those facilities would become non-conforming. And what I have given you is basically a list that I believe was provided in -- and it was a December or January packet. And so, that's listed for you. This just shows existing facilities that carriers have in the city of Kenmore today. And you can look at the height. Generally speaking, the utility pole, monopole sites are anywhere between, you know, 60 feet and 95 feet, somewhere in there. And of course, with the height limits that are being envisioned, those would become non-conforming. And of course, staff notes that if -- that most, if not all, would become non-conforming. The intent, it seems, is to require every site within the city to be taken down and rebuilt at a lower height. We don't believe this is a good -- this is good public policy for a number of reasons. Number one, we believe it's unrealistic. These sites currently provide service to -- that's critical for people today. It would cause significant service disruption. It would cause a large number of new facilities to be built to replace the coverage loss. In other words, if you have a 95-foot-tall site and you chop it down to 50 feet, it's likely that site actually is removed, and you're talking about building multiple sites around it to replace the coverage. And that would transfer the impacts on -- onto residents that don't have them today. And then also, all the facilities since we've been talking about this would, we believe, would also require an exception anyway, because even to fit a facility on some -- on existing structure or a new structure, we believe that would require a new -- an exception. And it would also slow needed upgrades intended to keep up with the demand of existing customers. Some middle ground I would suggest is perhaps that there are view zones that you would like to see facilities taken down or perhaps removed or decommissioned at a lower height, perhaps focusing on those areas. But for the -- for the whole city to be put into that same category, we think we would suggest perhaps a different policy there. With regard to height limits, that's number two in the memo. This is an area where we still strongly disagree with staff's recommendation. And we've provided -- both AT&amp;T and T-Mobile have provided specific testimony about what will work in Kenmore. And some of the -- and you can see the drafts that we've provided, the letters we've provided, generally, you know, we're talking -- T-Mobile commented about 100 to 125 feet. We've commented 60 feet to 110 feet, as generally as what's needed, depending on, you know, terrain and clutter and things like that. The other comments -- other comments have to do -- so, that's generally what we've described as what we need in order to be able to provide service in the city of Kenmore. Some of the height limits that we've requested, some of the changes in the height, have to do with the actual physical requirements and limitations for placing antennas on existing structures like utility poles, where the height is not necessarily needed to provide coverage, but just to actually fit our antennas on a structure to provide an operational facility. And so, the list of existing facilities, you know, I think this is a good indicator that shows what kind of height is really needed for existing -- for facilities. If you look at our existing infrastructure and the infrastructure from other carriers, you are seeing 60 to 95 feet, as generally as what's needed to provide the type of service in Kenmore. And I would request that perhaps that be reconsidered again, just looking at how existing facilities have really realistically have been built over time. Also, staff asserts -- they provided a list of some of their internet research, that there are no minimum heights needed to provide wireless service. And we disagree with that. We included, just because we came across their desk, I included Linda Atkins, who cannot be here tonight because she's sick. I included that, her email to the chair, as well as city staff earlier today. And we basically, we strongly disagree that that research is -- should supersede or perhaps take more weight than what our RF engineers that are -- that work here in Kenmore, that provide the design for how these systems actually work, you know, are telling us that the type of facilities and the height of the facilities need to work. The memo cites web research that informs staff recommendations for very restrictive height limits that preclude pretty much every kind of facility. I'm excluding rooftops, but pretty much everything else, utility poles and things like that. The only thing that really can be built within those height limits are small cells. And that's something that we've stated before, will not work generally in most of Kenmore. I spoke to AT&amp;T's RF manager for the Pacific Northwest earlier today, who's very familiar with the city of Kenmore. And we cannot use small cell technology as an alternative or replacement for macro facilities, because there are unique engineering constraints with the frequencies that AT&amp;T has licenses for in the Seattle area. And then if you look at the clutter, then in other words, the trees and the existing structures and things like that, they pretty much preclude the use of small cell in most of the city. Perhaps some of the densely populated or in this main corridor or Bothell Way, it might be a possibility. I noticed some nice new light standards actually up there, which might make good locations for things like small cells. But generally, in most of the residential neighborhoods in most part of the city, it would not work, according to our RF engineering team. And we were going to suggest three changes. Number one, we propose eliminating the height cap on utility pole facilities. Number two, we suggest modifying the adjustment language. We understand that's still in flux and discussion. We haven't seen a new draft of what the adjustment language would look like. But we have provided a suggested language on page 19 of Attachment 1B in your packet. That's AT&amp;T suggested language for how height adjust -- height adjustment and setback adjustments would work. We are open to the minor adjustment provision that staff has noted in their memo, but we would need to see it in context with the rest of the changes. We want to make sure it provides meaningful relief from the restrictive requirements that are proposed. The third item is that the CUP criteria that was discussed in the memo, and this is at the end of the table, and the only reason why it's -- we appreciate the changes that staff had recommended there. We don't necessarily object to it. But we are concerned that it might conflict with very similar requirements that would be required for an adjustment. So, if you go into an application process and you have two sets of criteria that are similar, you know, how those work together is something of concern to us. We'd like to see perhaps some further refinement of that, particularly as it relates to the adjustment provision that we also know is being drafted. And finally, with regard to -- and this is number four in the memo, with regard to the reasons why alternative sites would be disqualified as a way to provide an alternative site for perhaps a proposal that we would bring forward. We appreciate that staff recommended the changes. We think it's trending in the right direction, but we need some more time to evaluate it. We just didn't have time to fully go through it. We appreciate their willingness to make a few changes to address some of our concerns about legitimate reasons why an alternative site may not work. And that's -- that's it.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay.
There being no other citizens in the chambers, surrender comment. Hereby appear to be satisfying this item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve or amend the April 4, 2016 Planning Commission meeting minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hear any discussion? There being none. All in favor of the proposed -- of the minutes, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? There being none, the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, communication facilities continued. Invite to the presentation table, the city staff.
I would like to introduce Dawn Raytan. She's the city attorney with Inslee Best. And so, this is an opportunity this evening that Dawn can address some of your questions. So, I think to start, if it's okay with the commission, we would like to have Dawn to kind of give a brief introduction, kind of give an overview of some of the comments that she presented in the memo.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank you very much for having me tonight, and apologize in the same breath. I truly heard some of the struggle. I reviewed the audio. Unfortunately, I am committed to first and third Tuesdays at another city council meeting. So, the thank you was for disturbing your schedules, coming tonight so that I could attend this. So, both thank you, and I am sorry about that. What we tried to do, I think, with the April 19 memorandum, was try to give you a big picture, because what we're really doing is getting a big picture, and it seems like then narrowing and filtering our review down. And from both the questions I get from Lori the next day after a planning commission meeting, or some of the multiple letters from the providers, it was my thought that perhaps the planning commission hadn't seen really that big picture, which starts with the Telecommunications Act. So, when you're reviewing your regulations for wireless, it's really important to understand that you actually -- legislators understood this. They said, "Okay, we really want development and growth of service, because everybody needs service, but we also recognize the zoning issues that are inherent in those facilities." So, under the Telecommunications Act, it's -- they started, and the act starts when you talk about these zoning issues and placement. It starts, and if you go to, you know, just the broad legal framework, but on the second page, it really talks about local governments. So, it says, the very first breath, "We're not trying to take away your ability to identify how you locate it, the placement. We understand those are zoning issues that local people have concerns about," first thing. But with that same balance, they said, "Understanding that you have the right to do that, you may not unreasonably discriminate," which some cases have said, you know, the twist is, "Well, then, that means you can reasonably discriminate." It's not banned, but it's both. You cannot unreasonably discriminate, and you cannot enact things that would prohibit, outright prohibit, or have the effect. And, you know, whenever you have a giant bill like that, you wait for the courts to interpret it. And essentially, that's what they've done. They've done this not just right as soon as the Telecommunications Act came out, but it's been going on, especially in the Ninth Circuit. 2000, early 2000, all the way to the last case I've reviewed, 2014. And it's really -- so, when I first looked at the proposed bans, towers in certain zones, it's my understanding, no new towers in residential zones and no in the view zones. And the question of, "Well, you can't prohibit that." And I also understood from Mr. Lyons' encouragement that there be a type of review slash adjustment. I think Mr. Lyons may have been suggesting a different type of adjustment, which may in fact be the minor adjustment that comes later tonight. But I agreed. I said, "You know what? Absolutely. There is a safety valve that is available to this community. So, if you're going to in fact say, 'These aesthetics are very important to us,' but they can come in," and the courts have said, "And show a significant gap," and the word significant is in fact critical, significant gap in their, not everybody's, but their own service, "And they can show that they looked around, and this is the least intrusive means." That is, if they can show that, then they should get the facility and the permit. So, that is when we try to adapt that. I think I'm not going to go into specific questions that, you know, there's many. I think Mr. Lyons is correct. I think we've all truly tried to work hard and listen. There's still obviously some of those six issues to get through. But those are just my introductory remarks, is that kind of top picture, and then working our way down. And of course, when we get to the specific issues, if there's any questions, I'm happy to attempt to answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Dawn? All right.
Great. All right. So, there were two memos that we provided for this evening, and they both were in response to the material that was submitted by AT&amp;T and T-Mobile. So, the first memo is a series of discussions that the carriers and the staff and the city attorney all agreed, "We felt we could put to bed if you -- if you agree." And so, that was the longer memo than the first memo. And so, we can approach that memo in a couple of ways. I can go through the issues, and we can talk about each one. Or if you all are feeling like you can do that by exception, we can handle it that way. So, or if you have questions about any of these responses to the written comments, we could address those.
Okay. Does anybody have a preference as to whether we go through these one by one, and the staff and Dawn explain these memos, the issues, and their positions on them? Or would, for purposes of moving along faster, do you all feel comfortable knowing what's in here and simply taking up what our concerns are?
I prefer the just a very brief overview. We're only talking about the first memo, because that's the one that...
Correct.
Yeah.
For April 19.
Yeah.
Right.
They're really important.
Okay.
Right.
Let's do that.
Okay. All right. So, the first request, and, you know, there were two sets of materials attached. There was the letter, and then the red lines from AT&amp;T, and then there was another chart with red lines based on the AT&amp;T red lines that we received from T-Mobile. So, those were the attachments. And the page numbers, obviously, were referenced here. So, the first concern was that the purpose statement of the Wireless Communication Facilities chapter be amended to allow or to add a statement about allowing carriers to provide competitive voice and data communication services to the public. Staff was concerned about the use of the term "competitive," because we weren't quite sure what that meant. So, we -- and there is another subsection E of the purpose statement, which already talks about enhancing the ability of the providers to provide services quickly, efficiently, and effectively. So, for those reasons, staff did not feel the need to add an additional, what we thought was unclear, statement to the purpose statement. And AT&amp;T and T-Mobile agreed to accept that approach when we met with them last week.
Okay. Any objections to that? None? All right.
Okay. The second one is a request that the purpose statement, in that same purpose statement, to eliminate the phrase about compliance with the NIER. Those are the radio frequency radiation rules. And again, staff wanted to point out, "We understand that the city does not have a role in enforcing these requirements. That's something that the FCC handles." But I don't think to -- that including that, compliance with NIER is a -- in the purpose statement is a problem. So, staff recommended that it be retained. And again, AT&amp;T Mobile agreed to accept that.
Any objections to that? None? Okay.
Okay. The third one, reorganizing the priorities. So, there were a whole series of requests here. And I can tell you that the sort of the bottom line was that staff agreed with AT&amp;T and T-Mobile that a new tower in a residential zone should be added as the lowest priority. That's not even addressed in our priority list. And so, the absence was concerning. So, we felt it was important to add that as the lowest priority, rather than not speak to it.
And that's the list. It doesn't talk about the adjustment process. It's just -- it's just the prioritization.
It's just the prioritization, locational prioritization.
What about having towers in a view corridor as the lowest priority? I mean, I think we also -- we want to protect the neighborhoods and the character of the neighborhoods, and the look and the appearance and obstructions that people see, but we're particularly sensitive to views of Lake Washington.
Right.
Wouldn't that be the last resort for allowing a tower?
Right. You could handle that a couple different ways. I think that's a good point. You could say towers in residential zones or view areas. Or if you want to separate them out and choose one over the other, you could do that as well.
Yeah.
Either way, I think that's a good point.
Well, I would have, if it were up to me, protecting the views are more important than even having a tower in a residential area. There's going to be -- I mean, this is our priority list if they satisfy the criteria. Otherwise, so it's got to be a last resort.
Right.
But the views belong to the city. The residence is a limited part of the city. So, I think our highest priority should be to put the city views first, or the views of Lake Washington that everybody enjoys first. So, I would put that even below towers in a residential zone. Any other comment or objection? Okay.
Okay. So, we'll make that the lowest, lowest priority. Okay. The fourth one, they had pointed out that there's no material difference between the definition of a tower and the definition of a transmission support structure. Staff agrees. That was a good point of clarification.
Any objection? None?
Okay. All right. The fifth comment, this was a footnote that talks about putting additional facilities. It's in the residential zones. If you want to put something on a building, a non-residential structure, the current rules talk about putting those on things like, I will tell you, on a non-residential building such as a religious institution or utility facility. And they were recommending that we expand that list of examples to include schools, park facilities, multifamily buildings, et cetera. Many of those things are not in the residential zones. They're in different zones, the park zone, the public semi-public zone. So, in some ways, it's not necessary. But I don't know where all of these facilities are, and it doesn't, I don't think, really make a difference to add those to the list of non-residential structures. Multifamily is not a non-residential structure, but it is a different character of development. That would be the one place where I might choose something different.
Any objections? None? So, these are just illustrative?
Correct.
Okay.
So, you're okay with that?
We're good.
Okay. All right. In footnote three, there was some language that they had -- they were concerned about using the smallest possible -- it says, "Smaller facilities with less impact to the community have been considered and have been determined to be infeasible." That's a requirement, if you want to put a ham radio facility on your property. And they were concerned about the smallest facility language. However, they don't have that concern as long as it's clear that it's directed to amateur radio facilities, which it is. So, they are accepting that approach. So, there would be no change to footnote three, then.
Any questions? Any objection? No?
Okay. Number seven, there was a request that a pre-application community meeting only be required when an adjustment was recommended. We talked about that at length in our meeting, and described the difference between Kenmore's conditional use permit and conditional use permits in many other jurisdictions where a hearing is held. As you know, in Kenmore, a conditional use permit is a decision made by the director. There's only a written comment period. So, we felt it was important to retain that community meeting. So, we are recommending that the community meeting be used both for conditional use permits and minor adjustments. And AT&amp;T and T-Mobile agreed to accept that approach.
When is a CUP required as opposed to the adjustment?
So, the conditional use permit is required when in the table where we have the review processes, there's a use that appeared to require more community input. So, if you were to look at the table, things that required a conditional use permit would be maybe a rooftop antenna in some of the residential zones. There were specific criteria that was a conditional use permit. Or certain satellite dishes of certain sizes in the new towers sometimes were a conditional use permit, and some of the commercial zones. So, that is where the conditional use permit is required. An adjustment is required if you have a prohibited use in a zone, or you want to vary some other development standard. And as we get into the second memo, we'll talk about whether there should be a third tier of review.
But you're saying we typically in Kenmore don't require or allow public comment or testimony with a CUP, but here we are?
No. We allow public comment with a CUP, but it's a written public comment. So, the notice goes out, and then people can write in their comments to the director. With an adjustment, there's actually a public hearing required. In either case, we're recommending that the community meeting could be a valuable tool, because that's when the community comes together, before the application is even submitted. And the community discusses alternatives and maybe has some suggestions and that kind of thing.
Right. And I'm not opposed to that, but I was just wondering. It sounds like we're modifying the standard CUP process, then, to allow for a community hearing instead of just doing it on written comment?
No. It wouldn't be in the CUP process.
Okay.
It still would be a written comment period. The CUP process, once they made their application, it would continue as it normally would. But the community meeting is a pre-application process. So, before they even submit an application, we want them to meet with the community and talk about their proposal and what they have in mind, and the community can propose alternatives.
That's with every application, or just with those that...
CUP and adjustment is when we're proposing that.
Okay. Objections?
Just had a clarification. Did these also, these hearings entail what -- you send out notices to landowners? Is that...
Right.
For all of these?
Right. And it's not a formal hearing. It's a meeting.
But they still get informed, the local residents?
Yeah. Right. Exactly. That's a requirement in the current code. So, we've just broadened it to include more types of permits. Currently, it's only required if you're doing a new tower.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, that was fine.
Yep.
Number eight, a comment had been made that regardless of structural strength, colocation wouldn't -- this section that they're talking about requires that you build a facility that has enough strength to accommodate additional facilities, to encourage colocation. And they're saying if it's not tall enough, it won't matter, because we can't put it there anyway. And I mean, that's a good point, but I don't know that there's any harm to include that requirement in case technology changes, as we all know. It does constantly. So, they agreed that this was a minor point for them.
Any objection? Okay.
Okay. Then, number nine, this is about concealment elements. And again, this Then number nine, this is about concealment elements, and again, this, similar to the discussion about amateur ham radio facilities, there was a concern about using, or the language about using the smallest scale wireless communication technology. And this one, they had cited a court case in the Second Circuit, and you may have some questions about that, but we were recommending that this be modified somewhat, to reflect that wireless facilities shall be designed to be minimally visible through the use of architecture, landscape, architecture, siting solutions, and were feasible through the use of the smallest scale wireless communication technology. So that's a little bit softer language about smallest scale technology, I think to reflect the fact that the courts have weighed in a little bit on favoring one technology over another.
That's correct.
Any objection? None?
Okay. All right. Number 10, we require any time a, an antenna is replaced, or, or there's a modification to a facility, that there be follow-up reporting for the RFR, and so the carriers are concerned that the reports serve no purpose, since the city doesn't regulate emissions, but our response is that that's the only way for the local community to ensure that it meets the standards. The FCC is sending us a report telling us that it meets the standards, so we continue to believe that there should be that requirement, and the carriers said, we, you know, as long as you know that you don't have any authority to enforce the standards, there are no major concerns with that.
Any objection?
They do their reports anyway.
None?
Okay. And last was the comment that Ken Lenz referred to in his comments tonight about spot zoning, and we point out that we don't have a specific zone for wireless communication facilities, so we're not really rezoning when we're making some of these decisions, but AT&amp;T and T-Mobile agreed that because of other changes that we were proposing, including adding towers as the lowest priority, making sure that that was in the priority list, that that was no longer an issue for them.
Any objection? None? Okay. I want to check in and see if Commissioner Mulcair is on the line. Have we heard from him? Is he participating? Mike?
Mike?
Can you hear us? No comment?
I am here, I have no comment.
Thank you, Mike.
Oh, good.
You just pipe up when you want to render comment. Go ahead, Lori.
Okay. So the next item, and I, if you want to put up your screens, and maybe I can make this come to life, do you know what I need to do, Tila, to make this come to life? Oh, it came to life. Okay. So, let's get out of here. I put a hard copy of this PowerPoint presentation in front of you. I like to make notes on my PowerPoint slides, and I thought you might want that opportunity as well. What I am hoping to do today, as you know, this memo just came out, it was very dense, I don't imagine that really you've had a chance to go through it in any detail, but what I hope to do is to go through, these are the six remaining issues about which we did not reach complete agreement. We have agreed to some things but are still uncomfortable with some of the recommendations from AT&amp;T and T-Mobile. What I hope to do this evening was at least to go through the six issues and give you the opportunity to ask questions of the city attorney, as long as she is here, so that you feel comfortable if there are legal issues that you want to discuss, and then if we can't get through and make a decision tonight, we can do that at your meeting next Tuesday, May 3. So my PowerPoint is just a summary of these six issues. We can go into as much or as little depth as you're comfortable with, and again, if you have questions for Dawn, now would be the time. All right?
All right.
Okay, so this is all about the second memo. So these are the meatier issues about which we have not reached agreement, so, okay. So issue one, and Ken mentioned this in his comment, the carriers are wishing to have an exemption, so this is different from a process or anything like this. An exemption means none of the rules of the chapter apply. So they are asking for an exemption for maintenance, reconstruction, repair, or replacement for And staff, for a conforming facility, in other words, a future facility, or the Bastier Water Tower, for example, will be conforming, the antennas on the Bastier Water Tower, for a conforming facility, staff supports such an exemption. For a non-conforming facility, and they, all the rest pretty much will be non-conforming as to height, staff does not recommend that these be an exemption, and that is because we have a whole section in our code about non-conformances, and how non-conformances should be handled, and things like maintenance and repair are allowed for a non-conforming facility, but reconstruction or replacement typically is not allowed, unless, for example, you had a wooden pole and the pole was rotting. Then there's a case to be made that maintenance means you have to replace that pole, but the intent is that you're not expanding it unless you go through another series of steps. For these reasons, staff is not recommending that this exemption be put in place. The other thing I want to point out is that our new ECFM process, you remember, this is the process that the FCC authorized for modifications that are not substantial to existing facilities. Those apply also to non-conforming facilities. So now there's a whole category of modifications to a non-conforming facility that the city has no control over. So those don't even fall under the non-conformance section, those are just, if they meet the standards, they're allowed outright. Given those two potential avenues, again, staff is not recommending that these facilities be exempt.
Can I add one thing? I'm sorry, on the, since we're still on, well, since we're on the topic of non-conforming, the one thing I'm also going to recommend when language text actually comes back incorporating these recommendations, is that in reviewing the existing non-conforming chapter and the ECFM process, which is required, there may be actual inconsistencies. Non-conforming says only X amount, and the ECFM actually is larger, and so we will be providing language, you know, to the extent that if one is conflicting, the ECFM will prevail, and I think that will address some of the inconsistency concerns that have been raised.
So ECFM is federal law?
Correct.
So it preempts?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody comment?
What is our process here? I mean, like, are we voting on this one, or how?
Well, that, I'm just opening it up for discussion. So they proposed this, and I'm suggesting we, if anybody have comment or objections, we raise them now.
The only question I have is there was a reference to maintenance and repair being authorized under a different section.
The non-conforming allowances of our general non-conforming rules for any changes to a grandfathered structure, a non-conforming structure.
Okay. I just want to make sure that our minutes reflected that that was available.
Yeah. I mean, when you talk about, and you said, replacement if it's a rotting wooden pole may be necessary, is the only form of maintenance, do, does the city have a position on that? Is replacement then considered maintenance and therefore allowed without going through the adjustment process?
Yeah. And Ken and I talked a little bit about that this afternoon. I think in cases where you have a pole that has worn, and again, these are wood poles, these aren't steel poles, right? They're probably utility poles. If you have a wood pole that's totally worn out and that is, I don't know, rotting or whatever, I mean, my fence rots, so I assume these big poles rot, if you had a case like that, I think there's a very strong case, and I checked with Development Services, and they said too, that they thought that was repair and maintenance to replace that pole. On the other hand, if you're replacing the utility pole with a taller pole, or with a pole that's of a bigger diameter, or a pole that is somehow different so that in the future you can support additional antennas, well, that's not quite the same thing. So it's kind of a case-by-case discussion, but the intent really is that if you have something that's needing repair or maintenance, that you can do that.
Wouldn't it be helpful to codify that? So we're not guessing, or the carrier's not guessing, okay? They have more direction, if we say expressly, this will be considered maintenance under these circumstances.
That's helpful. The one thing is that to the extent you start codifying, you know, circumstances, there's always the argument that when you don't put it in, it's not, doesn't fit the definition. So if you have replacement equals one, two, three, but number five really is a legitimate repair also. So sometimes it's harder when you narrow it, but I, I actually like to give the latitude to the planners, they see a lot, and so to the extent that they have a professional judgment that this is truly repair and not replacement, and the law provides them that discretion, I would give them a little bit of flexibility, just because, and unfortunately, I don't have the technical background to know when that's clearly not a repair, but they may, they may have that expertise.
There's two sides to it.
Correct.
So.
But if, obviously, we could attempt some if that is the will of the planning commission, but I kind of see it both ways.
You're reluctant. Okay. Ken, did you want to, I mean, does the industry have a position on that? Not that you speak for the entire industry, but AT&amp;T anyway?
Yeah, I think that what we were getting at is the concern that we don't control when a pole, particularly a utility pole, is replaced. It's not our call. It's the, and PSE often dictates when a pole is replaced, whether, and they, we don't even get a copy of their structural, they don't even provide a structural analysis to the city because they're exempt under the IBC, so it's very, you know, sometimes they'll tell us the pole needs to be replaced, and we, we have to accommodate them. Sometimes it's done in conjunction because we're swapping out antennas, and even if those antennas are identical, they'll still require us to replace the pole, and we're kind of at their mercy because they own the structure on which we're attaching to. So that's the type of circumstance that we were concerned about, is that, you know, they might say, well, is it a rotting pole? Well, it may not be a rotting pole, or it's really in the eye of the structural, the structure owner, whether or not that pole needs to be replaced, and we often have to go in and swap out antennas or make other changes, not increasing the pole height at all, but oftentimes those poles, you know, they need to, particularly utility poles, have to be replaced more frequently than, say, a tower, a steel tower, which don't typically have to be replaced as often.
So what would your position be on this issue?
Well, we had suggested, and obviously staff disagrees with us, that, that replacing, we would just suggest that replacing poles like-for-like, you know, in other words, be basically allowed so that we can continue to operate those facilities and not have a situation where we're stuck into a new set of criteria which we can't meet, and then all of a sudden we're talking about chopping down sites and rebuilding sites, and, you know, again, this is part of the balancing act we've, we've discussed at previous planning commission meetings about how service is provided.
Okay. So Lori, does the staff have objections to that?
The concern is that if you allow a non-conforming facility to constantly replace itself, you do never see the end of it, and I'm not sure that the conclusion is that the end of it is that it goes away, but maybe a new type of stealth technology or another solution be achieved by forcing it to go through a new application. And the best examples, utility poles may be more difficult, but for example, the monopole outside the window, the monopole down on Bothell Way, if we were to say that you can replace or reconstruct that pole, that that's exempt, we will never see the end of it. And we may never see the end of it anyway, but we've lost our chance.
But I don't see much difference between, you can replace the rotted wood monopole with, you can replace some, the structure that needs to be replaced for some other reason, for example, PSE is dictating this, and the carrier has no say.
I think that might be a poor example, because the rotted wood pole is PSE's and not the utility, not the carrier. I mean, it's, that's what I, I mean, that's not a, that's not a good, good example, so maybe we can come up with a different example or something. But I totally, I, I would have to agree, I mean, when we did non-conforming uses, you know, the drive-throughs on Bothell Way, for example, and, you know, if you, at some point, when you say non-conforming, you mean that eventually, that, well, you're hoping that that kind of use will go away, and that it won't be replaced in perpetuity. So that, that is, that is what we're trying to say.
Yeah.
So, and I, what is the, I mean, so they would have to go through, so let's, let's take that example, so PSE replaces their pole, so that triggers the carrier that has to, I guess, I don't know why, would have to replace their facility once they put it back on, I don't know, but I, you know, what would be the review process, I guess?
So if PSE replaced, it was a perfectly good pole, and PSE said, we want to come in and we want to put in a taller pole, for example, or even a pole of the same height, but perhaps with more structural integrity, then the carrier would, would say, okay, well, we have a height limit, we're, we've lost our ability, ability to be considered a non-conformance, because we're going through reconstruction or replacement, therefore we now have a height limit, and so if we can't meet that height limit, then we have to go through whatever process is available to us, an adjustment process, for example, if it were an 80 or 90-foot pole. And through the adjustment process, the public hearing process, you would look at all of the elements of the chapter, the concealment elements, you would look at feasibility of alternative sites, I, I mean, you would go through as if it were a new application.
Yes, the problem, the only, the rub that I have is, is the feeling, oh, I'm sorry, I keep doing that. Is, is, you know, what, what we continue to hear, which is, you know, somebody else, PSE is triggering this, the carrier was happy to just go along with whatever was there before, so I don't know whether that's separable as a, as a, you know, if, if it's not the carrier that's actually initiating the change, but I don't know.
Well, I, I would be, I guess my question would come down to, why is PSE replacing the pole? Why would they do that? PSE, you know, my Machiavellian side would say PSE would replace the pole with a taller pole so they can put more facilities on it. I mean, PSE.
Yeah, but that's the change, Ken was saying, replace like with like, was, was the exemption he's requesting. If PSE says, well, we want a taller pole, that's not like with like. So then AT&amp;T would then go through the adjustment process.
Like with like is not what this exemption would be.
Well, I mean, but it's worth considering, if that's, Ken is saying that, and it seems like a legitimate proposal.
So, so the proposal would be that you would exempt utility poles from review if it was an exact like-for-like replacement?
It's worth considering. I'm trying to flesh out the merits of both sides.
And with a little bit more of the fleshing out of the conversation, perhaps, in fact, this might be something to come back and request, language for the word replacement. I actually have numerous, I won't say run-ins, but meetings with PSE, and they rarely actually do like-for-like, because they're constantly, well, there is no pole like that anymore, it's an old pole, and it's going to be seven feet higher, and it's going to be, so perhaps, because replacement, that might be some, somewhere we can actually define it to determine one way or another. I wanted to clarify, so is your non-conforming not allowed replacement, because I'm reading it, just says maintain, altered, reconstructed, so replacement would not be a part of a non-conforming review?
Not unless it's repair or maintenance.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
And that's what it says, it says like-for-like there.
Okay. So that might be helpful for that scenario, if this is something you would like to look at.
Is, is this common? I mean, I don't want to invest a lot of resources in a once-in-a-lifetime proposition.
So, I, I don't know about the carriers' experience, but I have been told by PSE that they're, they have a three-to-five-year vegetation, I think their pole replacement is five to 10 years, but they're always way behind, and so, is it common, perhaps more con-
Most are paying for it.
Correct. Exactly, actually, it's true. It's perhaps more common, but it's also, there is a definite reliability issue around here. I don't think replacement has been a big issue lately, but that might be sped up because of the reliability issues.
One of my concerns is that even if we allow like-for-like on pole replacement, which may not be very common because of PSE's pattern, that the carriers are losing their existing poles because of forces outside their control. If it were up to them, they may keep the whatever foot pole as is, so it's grandfathered, but then PSE says, we want to replace it with something bigger, suddenly, they're thrust into the adjustment process at risk of losing an important gap provider, service-providing pole, and they get phased out of providing services without their, without choice. Now, they can, if, you know, if there's an adjustment process and it's pretty open, I mean, we're trying to allow for accommodating those kind of situations, maybe that's sufficient. But that's why I'm trying to weigh here, is whether we still need to be more sensitive to replacement, especially if it's outside of the carrier's control.
It, it simply triggers another type of review. I mean, basically, it's an opportunity for everybody to take a look at that non-conforming use and see if there's a better alternative. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm also a little uncomfortable with the unfortunate part that PSE could trigger that for a carrier that had no intention of doing that, but I don't, I'm not hearing a way out of that.
And it may be. I know we're getting into a, maybe an irreconcilable situation here, but it's worth fleshing out what we, the best we can do with this. You know, one of my concerns is, they've got some really tall poles here, and if they, out of their control, they're, they're forced to replace it, or PSE wants to replace it, a 96-foot pole might mean a lot of resistance, and that could really jeopardize or compromise their ability to provide service. On the other hand, if federal law says that a city cannot prohibit
That's correct.
a carrier from filling a gap in service, a significant gap in service, they're going to get it. Is that right?
If they show that, and also the least intrusive means, that's correct.
Right. Which is fine, I mean, if there's a least intrusive mean, that solves the problem, but if there isn't, then they're looking at at least a 96-foot pole to fill the gap. So they can still get it.
Correct, there is a safety valve to allow for that, that is correct.
Okay. Then I'm okay with this. Anybody else? All right.
So, do you actually want to come to conclusion on this? Are you ready to do that, or not quite?
Well, are we waiting for language?
Well, I had anticipated that we would kind of talk through these issues, and, and if you were able to give me direction, then I would come back with a final package. We've made a lot of amendments in the last couple of weeks
Right.
that you haven't seen.
Right.
So I'm keeping track of those, and I would anticipate coming back potentially next Tuesday with the list, the revised language. If you're not ready to move ahead on, in that way, then we can discuss it more next week, and then the following meeting, I'd come back with the language.
For me, I'm ready to give direction, but I'm waiting to see language before we vote on a recommendation that goes to public hearing.
Oh, sure. Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just whether you're ready to give me some direction.
Anybody up for that, or opposed to that?
I'm up for it.
Up for it?
Yeah.
Okay, you have direction.
Okay.
On this issue.
Okay.
So just in review, we're going through the last remaining thing
Six.
that we need to, six items, and we've covered one.
Right.
And the advantage we have tonight is we can review it with Dawn.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And I'm always available for special meetings.
Why will this not? Well, and given that, I'm wondering if we should take a glance through and see if there are particular ones that we really would like more input from the attorney?
Particular what?
Of these six.
Yeah.
Because we may not get.
I think number two is.
I'm just wondering if we may not get through them, but anyway.
Get through the six, you mean?
Yeah.
Want to jump, jump around a little bit?
Oh, you mean prioritize?
Yeah.
You got a favorite?
Well, I don't know.
Or three?
Does staff have a recommendation to prioritize? Or can we just move forward?
It might be easier to go forward.
Yeah, okay.
I think it makes more sense.
I got the sense that number one was pretty important because it came up again in number six.
Right, correct. The same issue.
Let's just do it.
Yep. All right, number two.
All right, so number two. This has to do with continuing concerns about review processes and heights. And as you know, we still are not on the same page as far as what maximum heights should be, and the current concern that's been expressed is that the adjustment process has moved in the direction of being the safety valve, last resort kind of a process. On the other end of the spectrum, we have the conditional use permit, where we're looking at uses that we think are probably okay in the area but need some extra review. So AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, when we met last week, had talked about, well, maybe there should be a middle ground, sort of a minor adjustment process that's not that, like, end-of-the-world kind of a thing, like a reasonable use exception, but is more like a lower-level permit. Again, it would be a decision by the director. And, and we think that there may be some room to do this. For example, if someone wanted to propose a facility, but it couldn't meet the setbacks, but yet it was in an area whereby not meeting the setbacks, it would be a better outcome, should they go through the full adjustment process, or is there a middle ground? So staff is recommending that there be a type-two process for minor adjustments, and that the criteria could include things like the minimum necessary to grant relief, that there's a mitigation of impacts, or that the projects result in a better outcome that could be achieved by meeting the standards. The problem is, you have to define what is minor, and we would have to be really specific about that. Setbacks are one, are an issue that come to my mind. If there were a minor height increase, I don't know, three to five feet? Anyway, this is where I would need some feedback or direction, and then we could craft some language, if you agree that such a process would be useful.
Comment, objections? Dennis?
I, I.
Dennis first.
I like the idea of having the type-two process. I was sort of wondering if this is a place where you might put a way to deal with the substantially like-for-like replacement that we were just talking about in part one.
Yeah, that's, okay.
I like it.
I like that, too.
Anything else?
Nope.
Good, thanks. Dennis, Carol?
I think, given that the facilities have some objections about the numbers that we've picked for our height limitations, I think this would be a good, if you had a type-two process, then it becomes more specific to a particular site. We still have the safety valve for, you know, saying, overall, this is what we would like, our priorities to be in the city, but, you know, the facilities are saying that engineering-wise, some of those height limits do not make it possible for them to provide service. So this type of a review process would help to mitigate the big long process. And if it's a minor adjustment, but we have to decide, don't we, what that is?
Well, you guys can come back with what you think minor is.
Correct.
I agree with Carol, I agree with Dennis, and I was thinking, too, and this is a, it's kind of been on my mind since Carol raised this a few meetings ago, we were trying to set a height limit, I think, in residential for utility poles and facilities on those poles, and we had a conflict between the additional height we would allow, which I think was 15 feet on top of the, the pole, but we had a 45-foot residential overall height limit that would apply, but most utility poles are 35, so 15 and 35 is 50, which doesn't fit the 45, so they'd have to go to the adjustment process. And I felt like that, you know, maybe Carol proposed 50, and I actually leaned back that direction. So at least, at the very least, I think that would be a minor adjustment. And you had said three to five feet, which would allow for that five-foot increase.
Just a clarifying question.
Yeah, please.
So what would be the, again, what would be the review process? Is it still public?
So, it would be a type-two process, so it would be a written public comment.
Written comment.
Correct. Rather than, a type-three process involves a public hearing. The type-two process is written public comment submitted to the director, the director makes a decision, the decision is then appealable to the hearing examiner.
Okay. Is there objection to the notion, I mean, we're throwing out some here, Carol had an example, and Dennis had an example of what might be minor, and I'm throwing out an example. Is there a direction on that? Is it a possible minor process, a minor adjustment, or minor change? Go ahead.
So one of the things that I might recommend is have staff go back, look at some of the testimony. I know PSE would have to grant that variance, and if there wasn't a variance granted, they may be three to five. I think that's why we came up with it. It was the, you give, you give, you need 17, up to 17 or 20, but we can never get to 20, and we need that three feet. So it was, okay, that sounds, it's going back to some of the concerns and identifying that very small height that may again be in the PSE control, variance or not. I don't know why we keep coming back to three to five, but maybe looking at some of the testimony and/or working with the providers to say, you know, minimal process for minimal height is six and above going to kill you, you know, that type of thing
Right.
to give flexibility. So maybe working with them in addition.
Well, five, you don't need to say three to five if you're allowing five. If you're allowing up to five, that addresses my concern that Ken, Carol's motion.
Oh, that's true. Not, not to exceed, correct.
Yeah.
Any other, any ideas about what else might be a minor process?
Well, more, more for a minor process.
Yeah, more question. Would this apply throughout all the, all the zones?
If.
The height in particular, because it would, including view zones, it would, it would include?
It, it would.
How would it apply?
Right, it would apply in all of the zones unless you specifically excluded something. So, for example, if you set out a minor adjustment process and you said, here are the things you can vary, setbacks, five feet of additional height in parentheses, except in, then you could put in the view zones, for example, or, you know, you made, you itemized your little list there. But you could exclude areas where, if, where you're sure you would want someone to go to the full adjust, they still would be able to go to the full adjustment process with the public hearing and that kind of thing.
Well, that sounds reasonable because then in the greater community, it does give the facilities some flexibility where it doesn't have to go through this full-blown process, but then it highly protects the view zone or any other places that we indicate where this type-two process wouldn't be available.
Yeah, and I think, I like Mark's point.
Yeah, I personally like.
Because we've protected view zones to that extent, and then we created a loophole, so I think.
Right, I, I think that loophole.
Zone from the minor.
Right, that would be my thought, too.
For the heights, not necessarily the setbacks.
For the heights, correct.
Thank you.
Correct, yeah. Thanks, Mark.
And, and I want to clarify that the, you're calling it a loophole, is still there, but it's a much more full-blown process.
Right.
So.
We have to, anyway.
Right.
So I wouldn't call it a loophole, it's a requirement.
Right, okay.
Keeps you out of court.
Among other things. That's not good for you, though. Among other things.
Right. It's my job.
I don't, yeah, I actually don't want to go most of the time.
I don't like it.
All right, so any other specific criteria, or we'll develop a section about this and bring back some criteria.
Okay.
We could add some criteria if we think about it.
Right.
Okay. All right. All right, so item number three. Yep, I'm going the wrong way. Wait a minute. Yeah, I'm really going the wrong way. Okay, so this is a revision to the conditional use permit criteria, and they're, they're in a footnote, it's called footnote two, so where you've seen language about footnote two, really what we're talking about are the additional criteria in the chapter beyond the standard conditional use permit criteria whenever we're requiring this type of a permit for a use. So staff is supportive, and in the memo, we've shown you the, the changes that we would recommend. So some of the modifications that have been suggested we're supportive of, there was one subsection in here that talked about customary and expected business service to the site, such as point-to-point communications. You all may remember that Mike Mulcair raised that as an issue, so I felt that it was important to retain that since that was specific planning commission direction. There was some confusion over what was meant by that because it's not quite the same thing as what a wireless carrier would be putting on top of a building, for example. But, anyway, so these are the changes that we are recommending.
Any comment? This is three. Oh, the changes are just these highlighted ones?
Correct, in yellow highlighting.
I'm fine with it. Any objections? None? Okay.
Then number four, and this is one where Ken Lyons had suggested they hadn't really had a chance to focus on, had time to look at the criteria, but what happened here is that AT&amp;T had, this has to do with infeasibility. What are the criteria that the city looks at when someone tells them that an alternative site is infeasible? So you want to put something here, and we're saying, look at other options, and so they've looked at other options, and these are the criteria to say that those other options are infeasible, therefore, you should allow it at this zone, at this place, at this particular place. Does that make sense? Okay. So AT&amp;T had one set of infeasibility criteria, and T-Mobile had a set that was similar but not exact, and then a different, a couple different criteria. So staff went through those criteria, and I've sort of summarized AT&amp;T and T-Mobile's criteria here, and we felt that there were some of the criteria that seemed appropriate, and we wanted to incorporate. And again, on your memo, second memo on page four, in yellow, those are the ones that we felt could be carried forward as requested. And those have to do with, it's a rewording of looking at structural strength of an existing structure. It has to do with engineering, whether the alternative, the alternative can't meet the engineering requirements for the site. And then the last one, G, is the alternative is more intrusive on character or community values despite having a higher priority. There could be a case where they're proposing something, and one of their alternatives is maybe in a higher priority location, but wow, the outcome is really bad. It was unforeseen. We didn't, there are aesthetic reasons that you would not want to put that there. So we felt that that was important. The criteria that we were not recommending including had to do with things like, you can't meet the setbacks, there are wetlands on the property. There were, there was quite a series of things that we felt so broadened the infeasibility criteria that you could always meet that test, because you only have to have one site, and you can say it's infeasible. So we eliminated those.
Comment? Objections? None?
Okay, so this is one, and I just want to reassure Ken, what we'll be doing is bringing forward a recommendation based on your direction, but we haven't had the hearing yet, so there'll be plenty of time for AT&amp;T and T-Mobile to reflect on the criteria and see if they still are recommending changes.
Okay. So, I do have just, I mean, maybe I'm, maybe it's late and I'm not understanding this, but, so are, by not including the environmental constraints in the infeasibility, this is like double negatives, in the infeasibility analysis, does that mean we're suggesting that those sites are feasible? I guess I'm not quite understanding that.
No, because we have other rules that apply. So, for example, if you have a site that's covered with wetlands, the city has critical area rules.
Right, exactly.
And you can't build in the critical area rules.
Right.
But there are a number of sites that have wetlands, and you can't build in the critical area rules. So for a feasibility test, knowing that there are other rules that protect those areas, should you be able to choose a site that has those areas? should you be able to choose a site that has those areas as one of your alternatives?
Knowing that you couldn't meet the code criteria. So you're picking a parcel that you know you can't build on as one of your reasons you need this site.
That's helpful. People understand what she's saying.
But wouldn't, if there's another available parcel, wouldn't that mean they do have an alternative?
Well, that's why we're limiting the infeasibility criteria. We don't want to make it so broad that you can, right.
And actually, take that question, so you have a parcel with wetlands and without, but then there's a portion that they could build on. Sure, they could use that to demonstrate feasibility or infeasibility. We're just saying, but you need to look at the parcel that would allow it, not just a parcel that's inundated with wetlands or something else.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right, so issue four, we just talked about the infeasibility. Issue five, again, had to do with testing requirements for antenna modifications and replacements. And again, we recommend retaining those requirements, not because we have any enforcement ability, we do not, but just because we would like to see the reports that say it's not an issue.
So if we found there were a problem with, I guess, radio frequency radiation, would we, we can't enforce it, but we'd notify the FCC?
I believe they have a website that takes complaints. It's not that difficult.
Okay, any objections, comments?
Is this testing only, only for the radio frequency?
It is.
It is, okay.
Right. We, we had some language about interference, and if there were a complaint about interference, that actually was something we should not have included.
I did take that out. There is more case law with regard to, you know, the limited role for review. However, the FCC also has a rigorous complaint for interference in your own radio and gadgets in your house that you can send it to them, and they will actually go to the person who has the interference and then make them change it. Or, so they do actually enforce that on a citizen-based complaint.
Is this testing a requirement more than what the carriers do in terms of reporting to the FCC? Aren't they required to do any testing themselves?
I don't know.
I, I think we'd have to ask Ken. I would assume so. I think we've been told in the past that they do the reports, but...
Generally speaking, facilities over ten meters in height are categorically exempt from recording, reporting. So, again, if there's a complaint to the FCC, we go out and do a compliance test. But typically, we don't do, you know, RF testing of facilities that we provide to jurisdictions. It, it's not a commonly found requirement. We, we do analysis show how much, how much near emissions are expected, but we, you know, we typically don't do, but like I said, this is an issue we've covered before, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, ten meters is the number.
Next.
Okay, well, number six, we sort of talked about with number one, which again is treatment of non-conforming towers or utility or light poles. And I think Dennis's suggestion that we think about this in terms of the, this minor adjustment is a great one. That's great. So unless there are more questions about this particular issue, I think we know the direction.
Questions, comment? None? Okay, there's your direction.
All right, so the next, if I can get out of here. The, the next step in this process would be for staff to go back with all of the changes and with this direction and redraft the amendments. You've seen one version. This would be the second version. And with luck, I would hope to have that to you for your next meeting as kind of a final check and a final review before we go to hearing. If you feel that one meeting is adequate to look at that, we could talk about scheduling the meeting, the second, your second meeting in May. If that feels rushed, and you feel like these are such a large package of amendments that you need more time to review, we can wait until your next meeting and then make a decision about the hearing.
I had a question before we go to that. I, I thought I remembered a particular issue around the, the language in the adjustment process that we were specifically wanting to talk to the attorney.
Sounds right.
But we're, I don't.
So I, I listened to your last meeting, I believe it was April 4, or what was it? Where it was the, there was significant discussion with regard to the adjustment process, and specifically with the use of the word significant gap. The question about significant. And, and I briefly touched upon it at the beginning, but those words are the test. This, a jurisdiction can't be preempted if, unless there is a significant gap. And it is case by case, but they have the opportunity to come in and provide their technical evidence. You know, the city has the ability to review it. And there's a lot of cases where the carriers were unable to provide that significant gap evidence. So I highly recommend we keep the word significant.
I thought there was a, the end of the sentence was also in question. I, I'm just remembering there were two parts.
And least intrusive means.
But I agree to keep that, in light of all the case law and what I've read.
There was the thing about service network versus service. I thought there was a few little pieces.
And that was one of the reasons I tried to give you that general legal framework was that the cases said you can't be preempted or you are not in prohibiting unless there's the significant gap in the least intrusive means.
That gap in...
In their service coverage, correct.
Coverage, okay.
Right, and so we took that adjustment language, and we met and talked about it, and then reviewed some comments from the carriers. So there were a couple of suggestions in terms of order of some of the language, but I think with retaining the significant gap in service and then minimization of impacts, that we can come forward with some language that will address your issues.
And I'm personally good with it. I just, I, I remember the discussion about anticipatory gaps. And, and that this, I mean, is that ever an issue for a carrier? That they have to demonstrate gaps that now already exist?
They have to show what exists now. They have to show a significant gap in their coverage for the area, that that's why they're using that spot. So it's not, we have this, but we want so much more.
Right.
That's not the, that is not the test for a court. Two things, just, I try to be fair. One of the things, when the proposed text code amendments come back, there were concerns from T-Mobile's attorney, Ms. Linda Atkins, about just making sure that the processes, so you have that CUP process, a potential now minor adjustment, and your adjustment, and the non-conforming. So you really have four things that we are going to make sure and look at it and refine it. So if there is inconsistent or conflicting language, so you might see changes in that. And then also, she suggested that the ECFM process doesn't even have to be codified, it should just be exemption. That wasn't brought forward, but she sent me an email and said, you know, we could just take it out. But truly, that is not a requirement or necessary. Most jurisdictions are adopting a process to show, to see, well, show us how it is, it has not substantially changed, so we can approve it in sixty days. But without that process, how do we do it? But, but that wasn't before you. And then the last attempt, to be fair, during public comment, I just didn't even think about it, but Linda Atkins sent an email to Lori Anderson and to the chair and to myself just about, again, she just reiterated her testimony of April 4, which was just, we have concerns about the lower height. She did appreciate the thoughts about minor adjustments, so I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yep, I saw that, thanks.
I, I might make one last comment, too, in response to the public testimony. And that had to do with all of the links to the various articles that I had read. I did not, in that, in providing that, when I made my comment about there is no absolute height limit, I didn't mean that there is no absolute height limit. There may well be one, but it is not clear what it is, which is sort of what we've been saying all along. So I, I don't mean that there's not, I'm sure there is a height that is required in a certain location for a certain facility. But the variability in the way different carriers in different locations address these issues means that if we, if a certain height limit is requested, is that always what's necessary? So that was my only point in making that comment.
I think what you mean is minimum height for them to provide service.
That's the attempt.
Right.
I think Ken and the other carriers were saying that you can't say that there's no minimum height to provide service.
Right.
Our engineers know that there is, isn't right?
Yeah, that's right. I, I agree with that.
But it is.
But it's site by site and location, so it's, again, that balance, so.
Right, okay. Any other questions or comments? Lori, is there anything else left on this topic?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Not on this topic, but there's one other thing I'd like to chat with you before you call.
All right, then I think we've satisfied this element of the agenda. So then, staff, you're welcome to make any other remarks.
So one of the items on your docket is the housing strategy.
Right.
And at the council meeting, gosh, that was only last, last night. Yes.
Dig deep, dig deep.
So the council meeting last night, it was an agenda item. So I would suggest that you, if you have time, to go online and listen to that discussion. We had direction from council. Arch was there, and the council agreed that focusing the housing strategy on affordability was the way to go. So what happened at that meeting was there was some background to illustrate what demand for affordable housing was. And it was also then put in context of what would be the kind of folks that might need that affordable housing, whether it would be seniors, or young families, or first-time buyers, or whatever. And then it kind of got into, here's sort of a range of housing strategies, some which are definitely more market-driven. And the last kind of category was more sort of direct incentives. The council had lots of questions and suggestions, but they were generally in favor of the approach. And they basically said that there's really nothing off the table for the planning commission to discuss. There are a couple of areas that they would like you to take a good look at. I would say that for the majority, they were more in favor of market incentives rather than sort of a subsidy. But again, that was not off the table completely. So I think it would be helpful for you if you could sort of review that. And of course, when we bring this and introduce this topic to you, we'll obviously be summarizing that, but this would give you sort of a little preface of that. So that would be the next topic to bring forward after you've completed your telecommunications work. So I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up.
Could you give us an ETA? I mean, would this take place after the hearing in May? If we get that far? So maybe like in June, we would start this topic? Yeah, and I need to jump in here because I just talked with Dawn briefly, and she will not be able to review the draft in time for next week's meeting. So we can do it in a two-step process. I can bring forward amendments, and then we might have to have another round of review. Or we can talk, I haven't talked to Debbie about this either. Or we can talk about bringing forth the actual amendments on the 17th, your second meeting, and you can spend next Tuesday reviewing the video. I don't know, we'll have to think about this.
And I'm going to apologize again. I'm going out of town tomorrow at a conference, and I just won't be available till next week to review. So again, one more scheduling snafu.
What about, and when you say review the video, you mean of last night's council meeting? What about having the meeting set for the second week of May, much as we did this for the third week of April?
It's the 10th?
Right. Would that give you time, Dawn, to comment?
I can come, too.
Oh. It's the second Tuesday?
On May 10?
Correct.
Does that sound plausible? Sounds more efficient, if we can do it.
And that would give me plenty of time, thank you.
Right.
It would give us more time to read it, too.
And actually, the service.
So let's circuit, Mark is out, he's got a conflict, I think, we said. But we could ask the other commissioners, Mike and Mike.
All right, and we'll also have to check and make sure the room is available.
Right, of course.
So, okay, so we'll check on May 10 as a possible, possible meeting date.
And then cancel your second.
Cancel it.
Because you'd want to.
Cancel the May 5 meeting.
May 2nd, oh, May 3rd.
Yeah, 3rd, you're right.
That would be our next regular meeting.
Right, cancel it, because you'd want to cancel it with a motion, I think.
Right, right.
In the meantime, is there a link that you could send for this meeting? I mean, I just, rather than us.
Yeah, of course. That would have been on my list tomorrow to, to do that, yes.
Did the council have any comment or concern about the number and variety of sources we, from whom we'd get information on the housing element? The housing, affordable housing docket item?
No, I didn't raise that as a concern.
So the plan is to have Arch be the sole consultant?
If I may, I also heard this discussion in the, the April meeting. And you may already be fully aware of this, but the Arch is actually an interlocally-created entity. And it's created by the cities that establishing, including Kenmore. I think there's fifteen, including King County. And the cities support it with their own budget, annual budgets. I just didn't know if you understood, because I have to review those every year. New interlocals are amended, which require a work task force and a budget. But Arch was created by the cities to not only, well, actually, to, to help cities comply with their housing element of a comprehensive plan. And that's how the cities got together to do that. So I wouldn't necessarily call him a consultant, meaning.
Right, we've heard from Arch. And they did advise us on the amendments to the housing element of the comp plan. But they also received money from cities, not just for the services they provided, but for housing projects. So they have sort of a certain perspective on this issue, which is legitimate. But I would like to have other perspectives on this issue.
And I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard them multiple times, I agree.
Okay. Carol, did you want to add something?
I would also agree with you, just because we have this intercity organization, which I actually think is a very good organization. I read it, went out and read all about it. Read commentaries about what Arch is doing from other people, developers, and, you know, people in the community that it impacts. But I still think it's good to look at other cities and think of the clever ways that people come up with ideas to mitigate what we know is coming. We know that our Puget Sound region is going to continue to grow, and we need all the resources we can. So as a small city, planning this part of our next phase, we need to keep learning. But I think Arch is a very good resource.
And like anything we bring forward, we always take a look at, put it in context. So we put it in context of the larger picture of what's happening in the region. And then we also then try and narrowly focus on, so the unique attributes in Kenmore, and how best to do those.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Dennis.
Separate issue.
Yeah.
I'm hopeful that you'll be able to move the next meeting a week later. I will not be here next Tuesday, so.
On what, the 3rd?
The 3rd, I will not be able to make it.
Do we have to do it in official, to the council?
They will, we can do it by email, because it's a, as we did the last time, I think.
Generally, I recommend if you're going to cancel a meeting and you're here, that you just have a motion to cancel the meeting, because I think it's adopted by, the regular meetings are typically adopted by ordinance. And then a special meeting, you know, just requires notice, nothing else.
But we don't know what attendance would be to cancel that meeting.
Well, if you don't show up, you'd lack quorum, and you couldn't act anyway. But there'd still technically be a meeting. And, so I don't know, I'll leave it at that.
So in light of the fact that we're hoping to gather more information and have our city attorney available, I would like to make a motion that we cancel the May 3 meeting in the hopes that we can have a quorum at the May 10 meeting and propose that.
Okay, do I hear a second? Can we get Mike to respond to his availability on May 10?
I'm available on May 10.
Cool.
That was too.
All right, any other discussion? No, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Opposed, raise your.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? There being none, the motion carries.
I couldn't see his hand, though.
I know his voice.
Yes.
I know him well. So we've canceled, the motion was to cancel, and to hope to schedule for May 10 if we have a quorum, is that right?
And a room.
We do, it sounds like so.
And what?
And a room.
And a room, right.
And a room.
So we'll just get an email on that, and so there's, the motion says, "We approve if the room is available and there's a quorum."
The room is available.
Oh, good.
Dawn, we've satisfied the procedural requirement for setting May 10, do you think?
No, you haven't. In that, staff will have to provide the statutory special notice provisions, but other than that, you guys are good.
We've done our voting.
You've done what you needed to do, correct. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? That satisfies all the items on the agenda.
That's great.
And I have to ask if there's any new business. I want to say thanks again, Ken, for coming. I want to say thanks, Dawn, for coming.
Thank you.
I know it's, your schedule is, to some extent, fixed, so I fully understand that you can't make it at our convenience necessarily, but we appreciate you making it tonight. You've been very helpful.
Thank you very much.
All right. That being said, I hereby adjourn this meeting.